I have a visual aid.
All right, good to go. All right, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Center County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, April 28th. If you would please rise if you're able for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. At this time, we'll accept public comment for items not appearing on today's agenda. Is there any public comment from anybody in the room or on the phone? All right, seeing no one, we'll move to the minutes from our last meeting from last week, April 21st. Would be a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes from April 21st.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. Any further discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. Okay. Okay, we're going to start off with proclamation number seven of 2020, and this is proclaiming May 15th as Bike to Work Day and May 2020 as Bicycle Awareness Month in Center County. And it's under a little different circumstances, but we are encouraging people to get out and enjoy the recreation of beautiful Center County with doing social distancing. And we know that our colleague, Commissioner Higgins, is probably the top biker.
Well, amongst the three commissioners.
That's absolutely right. So...
I have friends who do 10,000 to 12,000 miles a year on a bicycle, so...
But no, we'll turn it over to you, Mark, for some comments.
Right. Well, again, the cycling and active adult community in Center County is very pleased that the commissioners are presenting the proclamation for Bike to Work Day and Bicycle Awareness Month. I think at least one of our municipalities might be delaying their Bike to Work Day until something like September, in which case maybe we can celebrate this again. But I did bring a couple of visual aids. One, a bicycle helmet for bicycle safety. Really, please wear these whenever you're cycling. I see some young people now on scooters that go like 15 or 20 miles an hour. You really should be wearing a helmet for those as well. And then my friend, Vani Henninger, recently posted a very interesting historical photo, and it's of a bicycle shop in downtown Belfont on High Street from probably a little over 100 years ago. And it appears to be located where Cool Beans Coffee is located today. You can see, the bicycles were very popular. There's a lot of young kids standing on the stairs. And I suspect this shop was in operation for a couple of decades because cycling was actually more popular than driving horseless carriages at the time. So I would, I appreciate my fellow commissioners' cooperation in proclaiming May 15th as Bike to Work Day and May 20th, I mean, sorry, the whole month of May as Bicycle Awareness Month in Center County. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt proclamation number seven of 2020.
Gladly seconded.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded to approve the proclamation. We encourage everybody to, again, safely bike and enjoy the beautiful outdoors here in Center County. All in favor of adopting the proclamation, say aye.
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 Motion is carried. Okay. Next on the agenda is proclaiming May 3rd through the 9th as Corrections Employee Week here in Center County. We have, our largest entity within county government or department or agency is our correctional facility. And especially now with the challenge that COVID-19 presents to the officers and the staff there, we wanted to recognize the great work that they are doing currently under those circumstances. But just every day, whether it be the intake of individuals within the facility, the care and custody, or working with the release, also the administration, they all do a fantastic job up there. And they have a special place for all of us. And in addition to the county staff, we also have two state correctional institutions within the county. And we know that we have one juvenile detention center as well. And so we want to, to all of them throughout the county, and even with our, the ones that we have cooperation with around the state, we want to, again, recognize the work they do as May 3rd through the 9th as Corrections Employee Week in Center County. Any comments from my fellow commissioners?
Okay. Yeah, I have several friends who work at one of our four correctional facilities here in Center County. We very much appreciate what they do for us, especially during these troubled times. They are obviously essential workers, and we very much appreciate all they're doing for us, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, holidays included.
Just the whole fact that we're keeping, you know, whether it's the Center County Correctional Facility or it's our two SCIs that are in Center County or the Juvenile Correction Site, those folks, as Mark indicated, they work 24/7, hammered out every day. It doesn't matter what the weather is, and it doesn't matter what the circumstance is. And we really appreciate the fact that they keep us safe and really do one of the most essential functions in government. And we really appreciate their hard work and labors and what they do for us each and every day. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners. So with that, we look to adopt proclamation number eight of 2020.
Motion to adopt proclamation number eight of 2020 proclaiming May 3rd through 9th as Corrections Employee Week.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion is carried. Moving into our COVID-19 planning response portion of our agenda, we're going to be talking about specifically personnel, considering some of the requests from elected officials and department heads to reduce furloughs. We're also going to be talking about some changes within the county budget, and then wrapping that up with a little bit of a conversation and perspective on the conversations about reopening Center County. So we're, again, going to start with personnel. We'll turn that over to Margaret at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. Center County government is into its second week of employees who are either on furlough, full-time furlough status, or reduced hour status. The duration of these furloughs, unless changed subsequently, is tentatively set for April 30th for court-related offices and May 15th for non-court-related offices. And because we know that many of the departments have changes in workload and workflow, we established a process by which a department head or an elected official may request that an individual either return from furlough status or be placed on furlough status because of the workload in a particular office. So this week, we did receive requests from the Controller's Office, Emergency Communications, Tax Claim and Collections, and the Treasurer's Office. And you have received copies of each of the requests, which must provide justification and speak to the amount of work that has changed and why it's necessary to reinstate someone from that furlough. So at this time, I would ask for your review and approval to bring these individuals back from furlough status.
Thank you, Margaret. And in terms of the, again, documentation that we have, one of the things that, I speak for myself, I'm looking for is the additional workload. And we've been doing this for a week now, and many of the department heads and elected officials have different schedules and different routines. And so there has been, in some offices, not a drop-off, and some offices have actually seen things pick up. So again, we're monitoring this constantly, so appreciating that. Thank you to the elected officials and to the department heads for filling out the forms, requesting this, and working with us as we go through this process. So I did not have any questions specifically here. I think they're all in order. And we're going to be considering these on Tuesdays and Thursdays as the need arises and giving departments the opportunity to bring these back. In addition, the courts have extended their closure, their declaration of judicial emergency until the end of May. And so on Thursday, we'll be considering a extension of some of those as well. But we're still getting data from the courts about what the workload would look like during the month of May. So we're not taking any action today on those, but it would just specifically be these seven positions. But I didn't have any questions on that. Commissioner Higgins, dursham?
I thought the department heads and elected officials did a good job of filling out the forms and making their case, yes.
Glad you're back on board.
Absolutely. Okay, would we have a motion for these seven individuals?
Motion to approve personnel requests from elected officials and department heads.
I will second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on this?
The only discussion I have is what impact will this have on some of the folks that have applied for unemployment and the impacts that that will include? Because I'm sure some of them don't, haven't started receiving unemployment yet. I don't know what that process is going to look like for them.
We encourage them, when we started this discussion two weeks, two, three weeks ago, when that occurred, to apply. And what this would allow them to do is for last week, and then many of these are starting on the 20, or either the 29th or the May 1st, they would still be eligible for that time period, the seven, eight business days that they were not working for unemployment. And there could be a potential where the workload then could decrease. And the fact that they have the information in the Pennsylvania unemployment system might mean that they would then need to return or utilize that again. So... But they would be compensated for those eight to nine days of not working.
I hear that UC system's a mess right now, so hopefully they're getting that worked through.
Yeah, we know they're hiring new individuals and trying to expand the processing of it, so, absolutely, yeah.
They're, they're, they got a difficult job right now because their workload's up 1,000, 1,500 to 1,700%. My goodness.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. We did do that. I apologize. We did, we seconded, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. Okay. Thank you, Margaret. And then the county budgets.
Okay. Share this presentation with Tom Martin this morning. Tom wants to join us at the podium. So as the county continues to navigate through this crisis and as it continues on, we know that our revenues are most likely going to be impacted. And the Board of Commissioners has started the process of reviewing what those revenues look like. And also, at the same time, to take a very close look at how we might be able to trim expenditures for county operations. That process is underway, and today's presentation, Tom will go through some of the first proposals, is just the starting point. This is going to be ongoing and continuous for as far as we can see out because we know that this is moving quickly and changing daily. So I'll turn it over to Tom to walk through the numbers.
Yeah, like Margaret said, this is just a starting point at this point. So these are some of the proposed budget revisions. Right now, a reduction in revenue in the Treasurer's Office related to commissions, and this would be a reduction from 217,000 to 121,000, so it would be a reduction of $96,000. If we move down to the public safety, we had budgeted $41,800, and we're recommending a reduction of expenses there of $35,000. That's 84% reduction within that particular area. And then conservation and development, we would, we had budgeted 381,000. The revised budget would be 311,000, which would be a $70,000 reduction, or 18%. Now, under the, we have courses and seminars and travel. And what we're proposing there, instead of an actual budget revision, is to freeze those particular lineups right now. The Controller and myself are going to outline a process, and we're going to communicate that with the department heads. There are certain courses and seminars where there are credits that they have to get related to their jobs, functions. And so we would have to have documentation providing that for that. But the travel-related things such as lodging and meals and even travel, again, there's going to be a process outlined for that. But again, what we're asking for is, again, a revision for the revenue for the $96,000 and then for $35,000 and $70,000 related to public safety and the conservation and development. And as Margaret has said, we'll continue to look at other expenses where we can have any type of effect or reduction there, or any other type of revenues that might be impacted because of COVID-19.
Thank you, Tom. And so essentially, in total, if we did achieve maximum savings with limiting travel, seminars, and courses, we would achieve, in concert with the three other items that are being, reduction in the revenue we're expecting, and also limiting the outside expenditures we're making, today would be about 175,000 in total of not utilizing the general fund. However, we're probably going to see, as you said, Tom, still, people still doing some traveling or mandatory traveling, or potentially some mandatory courses for the continuing education. So, but just to put that in perspective, the actions today would, at maximum, about 175,000 total savings for the budget. Thank you.
Yeah, the actual total adjustments to the expenditures would save about 270,000. But as we mentioned, we're looking at a reduction in commissions for the treasurer over the next year. And actually, I'm hoping that number is correct, but I think in some ways we might have even been a little optimistic with our estimate on that one.
Thank you.
Got to do it.
Okay. All right. So we would be looking at making a motion to approve the revisions. And again, we'll get further guidance as the days go on about the travel and courses.
Motion to approve the revisions to the 2020 county budget.
Second that.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion, questions on that? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. Okay. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Margaret. Appreciate it. Thank you. So I'm going to start the presentation at the computer, just because we're doing a presentation after this with our planning office, and there's some links that I need to click on, and it would have been a little bit too too difficult. So I'm going to head over there, but then come back to my seat. So we wanted to take some time today to discuss a little bit about the governor's proposal to reopen Center County, share our thoughts on it, and then just paint a little bit of a picture about what the next few weeks and months are going to look like going forward. So the thinking behind how we would approach reopening the county and working with our local stakeholders in the health field and also in the private sector and nonprofits would be to think about this as a marathon, not a sprint. But that was, I just, we decided on that last week before Dr. Deborah Burks gave a presentation and did an interview where she, I think she hit the nail on the head when it comes to how we should really thinking about turning on the economy. And so Deborah Burks is the Coronavirus Response Coordinator for the White House, their Coronavirus Task Force, and she's been at a lot of the president's daily briefings. But this was just said two days ago, where essentially she was on a conference call with governors talking about how we can start to reopen the economy. And she said, most importantly, they understand the risk, and they talk about this not as turning on a light switch, but as slowly turning up the dimmer. And so I think that's a really good way that we can think about how to reopen not only Pennsylvania's economy, but Center County's. So the one thing we wanted to do was to look at how are we doing when it comes to staying at home? And the case, the cases we've seen in Center County have been a lot smaller than other counties across the state, thankfully. And that's in due, in large part, because the great citizens have been doing a lot of work when it comes to staying at home and not going out for unnecessary trips. So they've been doing a great job. So one of the things that has happened due to us living in such a technologically connected world is a lot of the companies that typically use our movement whereabouts, where do we shop, what our interests are, they've turned that over to a public domain where people can actually go online to see how we're doing and how our movement has changed and where the locations we're going to and how that's improving. And so some of these sites do a ranking. And so this is a site that is going to refresh right now. It's called Cubix. And what it does is it basically looks at every single county across the country, and it gives them a rating in terms of the movement and how that has changed. And so they have four categories, and they go anywhere from basically the staying at home to traveling less than a mile outside of their house, traveling more than 10 miles, or traveling 10 miles or more, and then another category in between. So the darker the region of the county, the better it is for more staying at home. And so there's this portion at the bottom that shows, and again, this is going to be put online so people can see it if they can't tell it over CNET, what this looks like. But essentially, there's this graph, and you can see all the way back in February and March, we were hovering at about 15, 20% of staying at home. And then when the stay-at-home order started across the state, and then Center County was included in it, we jumped up to about 50% of us were staying at home throughout the day. So that's a really, really good metric. And we're actually ranked in the state, you know, we're eighth in the state, and we're behind a lot of the bigger counties in the southeast that are seeing those case, that case growth. So this is really good news for Center County. Again, a tribute. It's interesting to note that on the day, on the weekends, we do take up a little bit more of actually staying at home. So that's probably a sign of the people who are going to work, not going to work, obviously, and staying at home. So we can reach up to, I think this last, you know, just two days ago on Sunday, we were at 54%. So that's great, that's great news, and really a tribute to the citizens of Center County. Google is also another one that's put some data online. And specifically, when it comes to the workplace, we've had about a 47% decline when it comes to the baseline of how much we used to travel, move around. Still with grocery stores, we're seeing not as much a comparable decline. Transit, when it comes to CADA, we're seeing a decline there, which is great. And of course, retail and recreation, we're seeing a 64% decrease. Interestingly enough, parks, they don't have enough data to really show any trends, but that's necessarily a good sign that actually people are still using parks and recreating. And then again, residential is upticking because people are staying at home more. So again, just some good data to look at and to realize. And then lastly, this is a site called Unicast, and Unicast gives us a B minus for what that's worth. And again, in the state, our rankings, I want to say, are, we're fourth in their rankings. And they look at rankings of, and they actually help to get rural counties a little bit better feel because there typically may not be as much traveling, or I shouldn't say traveling, but there is not as not, a lot of cell phone use or the kind of apps that they have where people can get this data. But they're looking at a specific encounter. So when do two devices come together and meet? And so we get a B in that. So, that's good. So just wanted to do a quick dive into the data there, because I think it's important to tribute a lot of the fact that we're not having a lot of positive cases to the residents of Center County. So going into some of the changes, and again, that dimmer. The construction industry, Governor Wolf announced that, not on May 8th, but he actually changed it to May 1st, a few days from now, in consultation with the General Contractors Association of Pennsylvania, being, providing guidance and getting the construction industry up and working. So that's a good sign. And the fact that the private sector, through the Contractors Association, is working with the governor to get these kind of protocols in place is really great. And so we're even looking at our courthouse renovation project, having that come back online. And there's going to be a pandemic safety operator that's needed at every site that's going to be operating. And so the contractor that we're working with, we'd be identifying them as well. And just yesterday, he announced outdoor recreation was going to come back online, golf courses, marinas, fishing trips, privately-owned campgrounds. We have a few of them in Center County. So again, they'll be able to, starting this Friday, start to operate. So going then into the broader economy, on April 22nd, in a press release, the governor had said that he's targeting for May 8th the North Central Region, which does include Center County. And the way that the state is putting these phases out are into red, yellow, and green. So currently, everybody's in the red phase. And that they, and if they achieve certain criteria, there's four criteria that they're really looking at, we're then going to move them to the yellow, and if we stay there long enough, it'll then go into the green. It's a lot of, it's very similar to what the White House is doing, where they've got gating criteria, where if you can, if you can meet certain criteria for 14 days, you go into Phase 1. If you can do it again for 14 days, you go into Phase 2. If you do it again for 14 days, you go into Phase 3. And that Phase 3, or the green phase, is really the new normal, as we're now calling it. So looking a little bit into each of the categories, the red phase is where we're at now. Life-sustaining businesses only, the congregate care, nursing homes, prisons, all those restrictions are in place. Schools are also closed and most of the childcare facilities. On the social restrictions, there's the stay-at-home orders, large gatherings are prohibited. They're just doing the carryout and delivery with restaurants and bars. Then again, only life-sustaining travel is allowed or encouraged. And again, throughout this whole process, it would be the reiterating of all the safety guidelines, monitoring all the health indicators as necessary. So moving into the yellow phase, which again, the governor says we are a candidate for, would be still promoting telework. You would still have safety orders and pandemic protocols in place. There would be some childcare open, and again, there's be worker and safety provisions there. Still, the nursing homes, prisons would have restrictions in place. Schools would still remain closed. And then the social restrictions would begin to relax a little bit, where stay-at-home orders would be lifted. They would still have aggressive mitigation with the social distancing, but again, there'd be some lifting of that. Large gatherings would now be 25. We would be able to have 25 folks in our, in our room instead of the 10, if possible. We would be able to do the in-person retail, going into stores, but still having curbside and delivery preferable. And again, some of the indoor recreation, gyms and, you know, theaters, movie theaters, they would still be closed. And then restaurants and bars would still do the carryout and delivery. And again, still following CDC, DOH guidance. The green phase is really where we all want to get to and be at, but that's really not the, going back to how it was, there still would be the masking in place, following CDC guidance, Department of Health guidance. And again, social distancing would occur. And then again, there still would be monitoring of public health indicators. One of the things I think to keep in mind is that just because we, as a community, could get to the yellow phase, we could easily return to the red phase. And likewise, if we would eventually get to the green phase, there could be a possibility we get back to the yellow phase. So at this point, I'm going to transition back to my seat here to finish the presentation. So in the slide here, this talks about the areas that we're in. And as the Department of Health references us, we are in the North Central Region. And they've been not necessarily too specific on whether a county can open or if the region needs to open. And so I think their, my take would be that they're, throughout this week, they're probably going to be putting a finer point on that. In our region, Columbia County, which has a population of 65,000, we're at, we're at 162. But if they have 65,000 population, they're at actually 277 cases. But they have 65,000 population, they're at actually 277 cases. So they don't meet that criteria of having 50 positive cases per 100,000 citizens. So I think, I think we would argue that there's probably a, a case where we could be lumped in, not with Columbia County, and they could be, you know, their own county. But that's the picture the state's holding out there. So the four criteria, the first one is this one we've heard about. And the, the state actually used us as an example. They, they highlighted us on their social media and did the math for us, which in this context, we would be able to move from red to yellow on May 8th. But again, it's 50 confirmed cases for 100,000 population in the previous 14 days. The governor also, in his plan for reopening the state, talks about the need for testing, contact tracing, identifying high-risk settings, and having safeguards and PPE in place. And so one of the things that we've been doing is having conversations with healthcare providers in the area as a board and also Margaret as well, talking with them about what they're seeing when it comes to these categories of testing, contact tracing, and the need for PPE. So the cases is a more quantifiable thing. That, that, we know that, we find that out every day. But these things are going to be the heavier lifts. So in order for us to get there, we really need the Department of Health to be able to be partners with us to be able to achieve the, the progression of phasing. So again, the critical things, leveling of cases, reduction, testing, contact tracing, and the safeguards in PPE. And we, we're really in good position because Mountain City Medical Center and Penn State have partnered, they're doing contact tracing, where essentially if somebody has a positive case, somebody from the health entity is reaching out to them to basically see where they've been, see who they've talked to. And in order to mitigate the spread of the disease, those people then get a phone call who might have come in contact with them. There's no specific information given, but it is a great way to help to mitigate the spread of the disease and the virus. Same thing with Geisinger. Geisinger has been doing a great job of identifying the individuals who are positive cases, but then working with them and the people who they've come in contact with to, again, encourage them to do the 14-day of quarantine. And this was an idea that we came across that could have some potential and could get some traction. So we're having, obviously, we know many furloughs, many people laying off here in the county across the state. And so the idea would be to hire and train, and, you know, I think Center County residents have some of the, we have some of the best workers in the state, we could put them back to work by employing them as contract tracers. Massachusetts just did this and they partnered with a, a health entity where they put out an application for 1,000 help, uh, workers, where they would basically train and get them hired and ready to go. And in just two weeks, they had 15,000 individuals apply for those jobs. And so that, that's an idea of potential. We've got a lot of people in, in county government who do the lack of work. We've, we've made the decision to furlough. These people have great customer service skills. Many of them are individuals that come right, that, that interact with people over the phone, in person. They make great candidates. And interestingly enough, just yesterday, a group of bipartisan health officials, doctors and epidemiologists urged Congress to pass a bill nationwide that would hire 180,000 contact tracers. And so there's links for the news article and the letter they sent to Congress as well. So just to wrap this up, and one of the things that we've talked about, it's been highlighted at our Board of Commissioners meetings, we've all, each of us, I think, had a perspective on each of these things. And to a varying degree, they're the things that we're most concerned about, I think. If I didn't capture something, you know, we can, we can certainly discuss it. But obviously, the public health, welfare of our citizens, very concerned about business closures for small businesses especially, who may have been, you know, been working on a very, very tight liquidity and just making it every month, you know, family businesses. And then also the long-term unemployment and the consequences of that. And so these are all three things that, due to the nature of COVID-19, we can't do all three at the same time. It's, it's, the way the virus works is, as we all, all have seen, the mitigating efforts and the social distancing are important to slow the virus, which means we're not going to have as many businesses open and effectively not as many workers. But then the public health improves and then we can start to relax some of those things. So keeping in mind, I think, from my perspective, these three things are going to be the things, three things that if we look at and we monitor and we make sure that as, as we get better in terms of the cases, as we get treatments, and eventually as we get the vaccine, we're going to be able to, again, put people back to work and get them back to work. And again, we've got the assistance from the federal government, through the PPE program, the state, through PETA loans, that again, is trying to help all of these things, you know, keep as many people healthy, keep as many businesses open, and keep as many people employed. I mean, that, that's really the goal when it comes to reopening our county and I would thank the state. So lastly, I'll close on this and that we can have a more discussion, obviously, share all of our thoughts. But really, I think it comes down to the health of Center County and the ability to slow the spread. And the citizens of Center County have done a really fantastic job. Our stay-at-home order has been about five, five weeks in place. It'll be about seven weeks if we reopen on May 8th. And so during those seven weeks, we've really done a fantastic job of slowing the spread. And as, if we continue to do that and as we bring businesses back online, and we continue to be safe and we continue to mask, wash our hands, social distance, we're going to be able to stay further into that, as they say, the yellow phase, and keep businesses open, bring jobs back, and have success for the long term. But again, going back to the marathon, not a sprint, this is going to take several months, if not over a year, to confront this virus here in the county, across the state, and across the country. We've got many challenges coming up. If it be Election Day, where we're going to be, you know, working hard to make sure everybody gets, has the opportunity to vote. Well, there it comes to having Penn State students return to their dorm rooms, to their apartments, to get their belongings and then leave safely. There are many, many challenges. Then eventually, having Penn State students return for the long term. So we, as a community, need to prepare. We are preparing and we, we appreciate how much citizens here in Center County have done. So I'll leave it there, end it there, and be happy to have a discussion for us to share our thoughts.
The one item that we can track closely, thankfully the math is not too difficult. If the population of Center County is set at 162,000 and we're allowed one infection per 2,000 people, you divide 162,000 by 1,000, it's 162. Divide it again by two, it's 81. So during this 14-day period, we're allowed a total of 81 new diagnosed cases. We stay under that number, hopefully we can open. We go over that number, maybe the governor will cut us a little slack for infections in congregate facilities, but otherwise, he wouldn't be allowed to, to have us reopen. Yesterday wasn't our best day. We had six new cases. If we kept that up for the next 13 days, we would be at about 84 cases. So we'd be right on the cusp. So hopefully, we can have everyone continue to socially distance, wear the masks, follow all the protocols, so that we can stay under a total of 81 infections over a 14-day period. I would certainly love to have our businesses begin to reopen, but we don't want to repeat of what happened in the Spanish, with the Spanish flu in November of, I think it was 1918, where they had a heck of a spike and worldwide, tens of millions of people died. So continue to social distance, continue to wear your mask, continue to follow all the protocols, and stay safe. Thanks.
This is one thing, this is one area I think that we do have some control over. Our area is so just embezzling connected to tourism, particularly through Penn State University, that we really have to take every precaution we can to get back on track as quickly as possible. You may or may not agree with, with the metrics, you may not like the way, you know, things are calculated. I have some questions. But ultimately, what, what this is about is getting, getting to a point where people are confident in coming back to Center County, not only to live and, and, as, as students, for instance, but also as tourism. Because so many folks in our, in our community are relying on not only the tourism, but also the educational performance of our, of our major university, that we have to do everything we can to get back on track and get, get our, get our community safe for everybody to, not only here to live, but also to visit. And that's, that's really the lifeblood of, of what we do here in Center County and the importance of what, what I consider of this whole conversation. Because construction, restaurants, it doesn't matter what part of our community, it, it is touched by the fact that there are not only football games, but other events, but also the, you know, the influx of almost 50,000 students that come here and support the lifeblood of, of what I consider the vibrancy of Center County. So we really have to do what we can do right now to limit the, limit the spread of this, this virus so we can get back to work. And that's really, I think, what, what everybody has to focus on right now.
So with that, there's going to be, we're going to be following this very closely as this week concludes. We're expecting more guidance from the governor's office, potential recommendations. And as we know that, we'll be working with them and communicating that to the citizens of Center County. But we're hopeful with the great work of the county residents that we're able to reopen in a timely fashion, stay at low cases, and then eventually get to a new normal. So again, we thank you for everybody's efforts with mitigation. Okay, so moving into contracts, we're going to consider a contract for the DOC, and this would be for surveillance, K-9 services. Margaret?
Yes, this is a contract renewal with the Pennsylvania Department of Corrections to provide individual advisors to offer observations, training, and recommendations related to the prison and conduct K-9 searches. There's no cost for this contract. It would commence on the date last signed and remain in effect until terminated. So ask for your review and approval of this contract, no-cost contract.
Thank you, Margaret. Would be a motion.
Motion to add the contract renewal to the Pennsylvania Department of Corrections to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
Seconded, any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Motion is carried. Okay. Thank you, Margaret. We're going to welcome up Christiane from the planning office to the podium at this point. And whenever you're ready to advance, Chris, just let me know and I'll give it a click. But, yeah, we're, we're excited about this project and so we'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you very much and good morning. Just as a reminder, the Memorandum of Understanding, or MOU in this case, it's being presented today as a three-party agreement between the township, the county, and the developer. Whereby the developer will agree to reimburse Better Township for the costs associated with the Township Engineers Review, Processing, Inspecting, and Approving of the Engineering Details for the Aircraft Rescue and Firefighting Facility. Some people call it ARF for short. And where we're located is, we are located in Better Township at the University Park Airport. And to give you a sense of where we are is, this is Fox Hill Road, and as you're heading to the left or west, you're going toward Toth Trees. And as you head to the right or east, you're going to make your way eventually to Belphant Borough. And this is the main airport park terminal. The control tower is right there, and the existing ARF building is located just to the east of the tower. They're going to repurpose this existing ARF building for storage. The proposed building is going to be about 8,400 square feet, and it's located just west of the general aviation facility, right there, the orange square. And the plan hasn't been formally submitted yet, but I'm working with Mead and Hunt. Commissioner Pike, could you advance it one more slide?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you. This is the, one of the plan sheets that Mead and Hunt out of Wisconsin is, has prepared. And everything you see in gray is impervious coverage. Really, the building isn't going to generate very little, if any, stormwater because it's going to be developed over existing macadam. This is the location of the ARF building, and this is the existing building. So they're really not going too far away from where the existing facility is going to be located. And so I'm, I'm working right now with the developer just to get a, get a clean plan so when they are ready to submit to the County Planning Commission, then it'll be in pretty good shape. But, but that's the MOU that's on the agenda for today. And take any questions.
Thank you very much, Chris. Any questions for Mr. Scherer?
Do they have an idea when the construction would begin? Do they have a timeline at all? Or is this whole thing?
They haven't told me. It's, I'm sure it's as soon as possible.
Been setback.
Yeah. They're still able to work out engineering. They did a lot of their data gathering already. So they're just now working with fine-tuning some of the engineering, stormwater, the lane of the utilities. But I would, I would suspect that they're hoping as soon as possible.
Yeah. But this is a perfect example of, of the impacts that the COVID virus conversation has had on our local economy. I'm sure our, our airport has suffered as greatly as anybody in the, in the number of, of flight cancellations and, and travel destination cancellations that, you know, as we look at it, this is one of the key, you know, key features. It's nice to have these new construction projects, but we got to get back to, got to get back to some sense of normal so people can feel comfortable to travel again. And that's, that's a big part of what I think the conversation needs to be.
I think it's, everything at this point has been touched by it. I mean, really, I mean, there's no item on our agenda that doesn't have some sort of relationship.
Very big one, though.
Absolutely.
Well, this particular project, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, but this particular project is one of several critical projects that would eventually enlarge the airport. I believe the control tower was an important step, but we have to have a, a large enough facility to handle bigger jets. We have to have enough training and enough hours in for emergency responders, especially our volunteers, so that they can meet federal standards. Additionally, I believe this will be the largest aircraft rescue and firefighting building between the Harrisburg and Pittsburgh areas, which then, as Commissioner Dershowne was talking about earlier, can begin to affect tourism a little bit because we can now offer training to some of the other regional airports in our area. And then their crews might only be two dozen people at a time, but their crews would stay here for upwards of a week, especially in the, in the off-season, and utilize our hotels and restaurants. So this project has multiple economic development improvements with it, but the biggest of which would be it's one of many steps that we need to go through to eventually have more air service in Center County.
Thank you, Chris, for your time today and the work on this. We'd look then for a motion to add the MOU to next week's consent agenda.
Motion to add the MOU for the University Park Airport Aircraft Rescue and Firefighting Building to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
Seconded, any final discussion? Questions for Chris? Okay. Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
You too. Thank you. We have, we would look now for a motion to approve today's consent agenda.
Motion to approve today's consent agenda.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Anything else to add, Margaret, through administrator's report? Okay, all right. We would then just want to note that Sheriff Samsel has approved the personnel requisition for a full-time security officer effective April 20th. And then we would look then for the check run. Commissioner Higgins?
Another out of the ordinary check run. It's for $5,868,392.11. Two largest items. Thankfully, our great Center County citizens are sending in their county property taxes at this point. Generally, your county property tax is your smallest or second smallest of your property taxes, but across the whole county, it adds up. And so we've had an additional at least $5 million come in. And so they're going to send $5 million to a money market. Our second largest check is to Motorola Solutions, Inc., and that's for most of the maintenance required for all of our technology infrastructure for the 911 department. Obviously, a very critical department at all times, but most especially now. That check is for $640,111.17. So I would like to make the motion to approve the check run dated April 24th.
I will second that.
Seconded, any final discussion on the check run? All right, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. Thank you, Commissioner Higgins. Okay. All right, we have no senior requests today, but we will move into a voter registration report. And as a segue into that, we, I think one of the things we're going to talk about with Commissioner Dershowne's report, and also our election board meeting later today, will be the need for poll workers. And so on behalf of the board, and again, I think we're all going to share our thoughts on this, is we're, we are faced with a deficit when it comes to poll workers. And so as much as a community can do, if there are individuals, if there are people who are curious about what that would, would mean to be a poll worker, we'd be happy to talk with you through our elections office. You can go onto our website, centercountypa.gov/elections, to find out more about becoming a poll worker. And we are going to be receiving voter protection kits for every precinct in, in terms of gloves, sanitizer, wipes. So the individuals that will be working the polls on Election Day to make sure that we can cast a ballot, all of us can cast them in person, would have the opportunity to have those protections and observe safe distancing. Having said that, the need for voting by mail, we would encourage everybody to vote by mail. We would love it if every ballot that's cast is before the election and our poll workers set up shop, nobody comes in to vote because everybody's voted by mail, and they pack up and go home. That would be terrific. But we are pragmatists, we understand the practical nature of people still wanting to cast their ballot. And as of today, we are having a in-person election. And so we would encourage people, if they're interested and able... And so we would encourage people, if they're interested and able, to reach out to us to work the polls on Election Day. So with that segue, we'll turn it over to Commissioner Dershowitz.
All right. Well, first of all, that's, I will, I would like to address at least a part of that conversation. Because we rely on precincts literally in every municipality in Center County, and obviously, some of the folks that, that work those polls have, you know, are seasoned and maybe in vulnerable states. We truly do need volunteers from the community to step up right now to provide us the manpower to operate our election systems. Oftentimes, we neglect to, to understand all the mechanization that occurs to make an election possible. And this is one of those times when you as citizens have the opportunity to step up and, and provide that manpower. If you're healthy and able-bodied, it's a long day, but it's a very gratifying day. It'll be June 2nd. It'll be a Tuesday. In a, in a more perfect world, it would have been today. And we would have been running the, the primary election this morning. We have a little bit more time, almost five weeks, to, to prepare for what we consider the, the new, the new eventuality, which is we need to get together as a community and, and provide the manpower to make this happen. This is the, really, the pillar and the cornerstone of what democracy and representative government is about is to make sure that we get, get folks out to vote. To make that possible, we need folks at the polls. So if you have the opportunity, it doesn't matter what area of the county you work in. If you can give us a day and you will be remunerated a small amount of money for your efforts that day. But most importantly, it's the satisfaction of knowing that we can pull off probably the most important part of, of what it means to be an American in the midst of a crisis. That, and we really do need your help. So if you've got that capability, as Michael indicated, contact our elections office. Let them know you're interested. It's, it's very, very important. We will take all the, all the safety and safeguards necessary to keep everybody well that day. But it is a process that unfortunately is probably going to take a little bit longer this time because it, there will be social distancing and things will be a little slower. We don't expect a huge, huge, huge turnout like we would in November. But that all being said, it's very important that we get, we get the manpower out there to make this happen. And this is, I, I think this is going to be echoed throughout the state. But we really would appreciate volunteers from the studio audience, if you will, to, to get out there and, and to help us with this effort. That being said, today's election report, we have 109,206 registered voters in Center County. It's actually down 22 from our last report. There are 46,407 Democratic registrants, 149 Green Party, 670 Libertarian, 14,506 No affiliations, and 42,796 Republican voters, which leaves all others at 4,678. And in the spirit of solidarity, I would like to offer the American Solidarity Party as the minor party of the, of the day. And we appreciate the one registrant this morning. And just appreciate the spirit that they bring to the, to the conversation. Now, in the precinct review, today we are going to look at precinct number 69, which is Penn Township. They vote at St. James Methodist Church in Coburn. In the last election, there were 622 registrants, 271 folks cast ballots, which led a percentage turnout of 43.57%. And we really appreciate St. James Methodist Church allowing us to use their facility and look forward to working with them again next month. Or actually in June, I'm sorry. It seems like next month. Okay, the, the folks that make it happen in precinct 69 is, the judge of election is Charles Boyer. Minority inspector is Mary Emel. The majority inspector is Tori Withrow. The clerks are Pamela Smith and Riva Baylitz. And we want to thank them for their hard work. And hopefully you'll show up come June 2nd and be able to help us out again. And if not, as we reiterated, reiterated numerous times, you know, contact our elections office and, and volunteer your services if you're able on, on June 2nd. There's a training process for that, but we'll get you through that. It's not a, it's not an extensive thing, but having, you know, good people, dedicated people there for the election is what makes it all work. And we would really appreciate your help. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Just a little aside, Mr. Boyer runs, Mr. Boyer's High Calorie Kitchen. He's a very good cook, likes his stuff.
He does do on Election Day. We know a lot of precincts offer food. And I think he takes pride in, in the bakery, baking and cooking he does for the elections.
High calorie kitchen.
Yes.
Sounds like a man after my own heart.
Well, we thank, we thank everybody for, for all the work they do for the elections. And again, we'll be talking about that in the, in the days and weeks to come. Do we have any executive sessions to report, Margaret? Okay. We have the balance of our meeting schedule there. We will be held, holding, let's see if it's on there. We will be holding a Thursday commissioners' meeting. It will be virtual and we're going to use, be working on using a secure platform that everybody can join and participate on. So again, Thursday, and our website will, will list the information, but it'll be at 10:00 a.m. Again, our, our website will have the, the link for that. So with that, we'd look for any questions from the press.
Quickly about the lessons, Commissioner Dershowitz?
Is there a set number of volunteers that you're, poll volunteers that you're looking for? At least an estimate as to how many? You mentioned a lot of folks are in that older demographic who are poll workers. Any estimate as to how many you would need to replace?
We are actually doing that data right now. One of the challenges that, that presented itself through this COVID-19 conversation is we, we used a lot of Belfont High School students to cover some of the precincts, particularly in the Center Region. We are not going to have them available for, for staffing. So we are going through right now and looking at what truly is the need. And I would say it's probably going to be in dozens. And we, we're going to be able to deploy a fair number of people. And there's a lot of folks that have been doing this for years that are very dedicated and very, very strong in their, in their will to proceed. But we also are going to need probably dozens to, to backfill some of the, some of the other positions. One of the other challenges that we have, obviously, is, is some of the polling places are going to have to change because as, as we move forward, some of the, some of the places that traditionally provided us accommodation are no longer appropriate. And we're going to have to find, you know, new locations. So as we move forward here over the next several weeks, and it's part of the election board conversation this morning, is making sure that we have not only the facilities, but the staffing to provide an effective election. And as Michael indicated, there will be a strong emphasis on, on mail-ins, but we still have to provide the, the physical open spaces to, to vote for the folks that choose to cast their ballots that way. So we're going to be working as hard as we can. We just appreciate getting the word out there and making sure that people understand that the need is, is very real. And if they're able to help out, we, we will probably give them a, give them a job that day because there's a lot of work to do. We don't have an exact number yet. Hopefully, within the next week, we'll have that a little bit better nailed down. But just appreciate spreading the word. So, thank you.
And any requirements?
You know, if you mentioned safety, obviously, in terms of what the poll workers will be wearing, but will there be requirements for what voters have to wear to the Senate?
I don't have an exact answer to that. I would hope that, that voters would respect the fact that they are in a somewhat congregate environment. They're around other people and, you know, masks would be appropriate. We're going to take every precaution we can with, with PPE for our workers. But also, you know, we'll probably have individual pens for use so they won't be reusing, you know, writing implements. There are some special accommodations we're going to certainly have to do this time. And we'll make sure that everybody is, is able to safely cast a ballot here in Center County.
We're not at the point right now where someone will be turned away if they don't have a mask on.
No. No, we'll, we'll provide whatever we need to do to make sure that people vote.
So it sounds like those who volunteer will not necessarily be working their own precinct if you need dozens of volunteers.
It may well be, yes. We may have to make it, whatever. We'll fill in wherever we have to fill in to make sure that everybody has the opportunity to cast a ballot.
Shifting to obviously the earlier discussion about regions and such. If you all want to address this, is it your position that counties should be treated as individual counties? Or do you prefer maybe the regional approach if we, in terms of recovering or returning? The governor, I know we're trying to go back and forth on this. We don't have a clear message right now. But what's at least the message from the Center County Commissioners on this subject in terms of do you have a preference?
Sure. So the, the, we're, since in Center County, we're very interconnected. And we also provide health services for a lot of our surrounding counties. So I think everybody, every county is going to have a different take on this, whether they want to be considered alone, considered as a region. But from the data that we're seeing, Center County residents have done a really great job in, in mitigating the cases. And if we can continue to do that, and, you know, there should be, there should be a, they should, the state should be able to appreciate the states, the counties that are doing better than others. But again, the Department of Health has certain resources when it comes to a region that they, they have to utilize. So in a perfect world, it would be counties. And if we can get there, great. But if they have some sort of hybrid system where it's, they're looking at it as a region, but there's also the county perspective, that, that could work. But I think the biggest thing is why, if they can explain and they can give guidance on why they're doing it and what the rationale is, that is going to help tremendously. But if it's, if it's, if there isn't any clarity or any understanding about why it's being given out, I feel there's going to be more confusion. So it'd be great if we could do it as a county, but a hybrid would be the next best, best thing, from my perspective.
Hiring of, the tracers?
Yes.
You're talking about a lot of people. How's that fit in with the health department's non-disclosure form for EMTs and that type of thing?
It would be separate. That would be, that'd be a separate conversation. And there's legislation that's actually looking to address the concerns that a lot of counties have across the state about taking on the responsibility of the non-disclosure agreements. But it would be, it would be a separate, yeah, that would, it would really be a separate conversation. It still is working with the data of those individuals. But there's, there's a lot of work that's been done. Again, Massachusetts is leading the way on it in identifying these. Currently, the state is using nurses and retired nurses to do the contact tracing. But we're really going to have to scale that out. And the more that we can alert people that they may come in contact with somebody that has COVID-19, tested positive, and get them into quarantine, the mitigating of the spread is, is ideal. Again, it goes to the point of if we want to get to the yellow phase and stay there, go to the red, green phase, again, opening up businesses, the more infrastructure we can have to find the, the virus and, and quarantine it, the better. And so it's just an idea that's, that's put out there about how we can go about doing that here in Center County in Pennsylvania.
With these seven employees, I guess, that are going to be coming back here, I believe you announced when that would be affected? Do we know when that will take effect?
Yes, on the agenda, there are dates. The majority of them are tomorrow, and there are some that are on May 1st, Friday.
I guess, obviously, you feel that this is a step in the perhaps right direction? How many more employees potentially could follow this? Is this just sort of a one, you know, we are unsure of this? Or there could be sort of an exponential wave of, of more coming back?
But we, we do know that some of the, another elected official has requested some to be considered on Thursday to begin on, on Monday. And then we have another department head who is putting a request in. So it's really going to be on a rolling basis as we go forward. And then the courts, as we know, their, their furloughs were ending on May 1st. So again, with them closing, there's most likely going to be, and we've been talking with elected officials that are in the courts, our public defender as well, and the president judge about what that's going to look like. So on Thursday, again, we're going to be having a, a virtual commissioners' meeting where we're going to be considering some of those items as well.
Unemployment is just the only other thing I know, I believe Commissioner Dershowitz mentioned there. We're getting calls off the hook of people saying, listen, we can't get in. We're having, it's taken a long time. Any message from the state at least to you folks here as to why that is? What we've heard and whispers has been that it's just a lot, it's too much, it's just the, it's way too much for anyone to handle at this point. What's been your observation or been your understanding of this? And what do you urge citizens who are experiencing it to do?
Sure. Well, keep applying. I know the state is bringing back retirees. The state is shifting people from some other departments. But when you have a 1,500 to 1,700% increase in your workload, that's very, very difficult to handle. So they're trying to catch up. I know they're, they're working extra, but keep applying. And there is no initial week of not receiving unemployment benefits. So once you get in, once you're registered, the state will catch up financially. But I know in the short, short term, it is, it is a cash flow issue for a lot of families.
Any estimation as to how many in Center County you're currently facing for being impacted by this?
They've put out weekly numbers about initial, initial claims and then, and then continued claims. And it's, it's, it's in the thousands at this point. But those are, again, to go to the point that was made earlier, processed. And so we're unsure about how many are out there. In addition, some people may say, well, I'm not going to apply at this point. I can, you know, I choose, I'm choosing not to. So that data is typically captured then on people who are looking for work. And so because there's not as many jobs, that data might have, be more difficult to track. So we know it's in the thousands, but I think it'd be premature to put an exact number on it.
It is encouraging that this week we will be seeing the construction industry being fired back up here in Center County. And I think that's going to have a huge, huge impact on, on the work, on the workforce in our community. So very, very happy to see that the governor pulled that back by a week. I think there's, that'll help quite a bit relieving some of the, the pressure on that system.
Tourism with the golf and the marinas, is that? I know you mentioned tourism is a big factor. I know there's still a lot of stipulations on that. Is that going to make any difference, you think, certain projects?
I, I think it'll be a very positive thing for recreation in general. I think there's obviously a lot of folks who enjoy golf and the other activities. And I think it'll be just another, another opportunity to get businesses back open and get people out, out recreating and enjoying themselves a little bit, which is, you know, I think everybody's mental health is, is being tested right now. So I, I think anything that, that relieves that, I think would probably be a positive.
State House full board last night in revising the budget fiscal year specifically said their working numbers counting on Penn State on-campus resuming in the fall. Does the county, when you're doing budget projections, is that a factor?
Not necessarily. So in terms of Penn State's, the share that they're putting in, we get a fee in lieu of taxes. So there wouldn't necessarily, from Penn State's perspective, in terms of how much they're contributing to our budget. But there's going to be, so even if they would bring students back, there still would be effects. They're still going to be mitigating effects from businesses that have closed down, people who are currently out of work. They've already talked about through a, I believe it was a video from President Barron talking about international students will be unlikely to come back to campus. That's a large percentage. That's a very large percentage of, I should say, it's a, it's a sizable income stream that they have. They're still going to receive that in certain ways, but them not being here would affect the economy here. We don't, we don't rely on earned income tax. We don't rely on, on sales tax. So our property tax is a more, more concrete number. But it's too soon to tell. We do know that through June, they're not going to be here. And so we'll wait and see what the rest of the year looks like. But it'd be, we have not taken any action on our budget specifically related to if Penn State brings back or doesn't bring back.
A few different revenue sources. The school district and the borough of State College, I think, are much more dependent on the university over the short term than the county government is. We're primarily property taxes and fees. Certainly, Penn State students pay some fees, but the, the property taxes tend to come in roughly the same for the county, regardless of the number of students on the university's on-campus.
You mentioned the beginning court?
Closed till May. Is that Center County Court or statewide court?
Center County. Yeah, Center County. The President Judge West put that order out last week. And so, yes.
You know what format you'll be on Thursday?
Yeah, we're, we're working on a platform that, that is secure. So BlueJeans, if you, if you're familiar with that, BlueJeans is the, the software. Yeah.
No Zoom, no Zoom bombing, huh?
Only if it's you.
Yeah, 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 yeah. That's right.
Yeah. You know, the, the interesting thing will be over the next couple of weeks, and we've talked about it. I, I personally believe, and I believe my fellow commissioners feel strongly as well, that we keep these Tuesday meetings in person. I think the opportunity to ask questions and interact with particularly the media as, as things evolve is, is very important. And we appreciate that, you know, that, that you're here and, and you can provide, you know, outlet for us to get the word out about the issues that are concerning the citizens of Center County.
I think the only thing, yeah, the only thing that would change that is if we would have a, I mean, God forbid, a positive COVID case in the building or somebody with, around this this table or, you know, would have it. So yeah, as long as that doesn't happen, I think we're good to go. But yeah, thank you, thank you all, everybody. We're actually, we're going to look to adjourn this meeting, but then we're going to have a salary board meeting as well. There's just one item on there, I believe, let's see here, two actually, so we look then for a motion to adjourn our Commissioners' Meeting.
Motion to adjourn the Commissioners' Meeting at 11:07.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried, okay, and then we're going to call to order the Salary Board Meeting. We're going to welcome our controller in. Thank you, Jason.
Aye.
All right, we're calling, called the, we called that to order, we see no one here for public comment, we're going to look for an approval of the minutes from the Thursday, March 26th meeting. Would there be a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the Salary Board Meeting minutes from Thursday, March 26th.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion on the minutes? All right, let me just get this, this is 11:07, we called it to order, minute would be mark, Jason seconded, okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes, any further discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion has carried. Okay, so Sheriff, you'll join the Salary Board at this point as a voting member. Anything you'd like to add for this?
I just moved Johnson, Deputy Johnson to Deputy Sheriff Airport, he's been replacing Thomas Corion, who's now retiring. This Friday, he took a phone call, ran a little pizza party on Thursday, so he doesn't even have pizza for him.
Virtual pizza?
Virtual pizza, it'll be his last day.
How's that work?
We'll figure it out.
You've been with us 15 years?
Eleven or 12, I think.
Eleven, oh, 11, 12, oh, okay.
I'd have to look, I don't quite remember.
But at least a decade. Yeah, wow, okay.
He's one of the tender people like myself, and he's one of the two that's left, so, yeah, he's retired, he's retired from State Police, swallowing, and kind of, yeah.
Okay, all right, would you want to make that as a motion?
I'd like to motion Salary Board to approve the motion of Johnson, Deputy Johnson, Moss to Airport, so I definitely.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion has carried, okay, thank you, Brian. For our planning item, we have consider approval of the voluntary demotion change in department for Betsy Barton from full-time housing program specialist in adult services to the community development, or I'm sorry, senior planner one, housing and community development in the planning office. And so this would be at the current rate, Margaret, did you want to touch on this? We know that you were talking, working with Ray on this.
Yes, so, an offer was technically made to the individual at the amount of $24 a hour. The government's only position, the 2,000, 3,000, the first year makes now, and the new individual would be extended to this calendar year, this year, 2,000, 7,000, 9,000, to full year next year, 2021, it'll be a 14 policy, 13,000. It is a, for the individual, we make a lot of trouble, it's a matter of, it's a bigger picture, it's a decrease.
Good, okay, thank you, Margaret. Any questions, comments on this motion? Okay, hearing none, would there be a motion?
Motion to approve the voluntary demotion change for Betsy Barton.
Second.
Moved and seconded, and that is at the $24.12 an hour? Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, hearing no further discussion, seeing no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, and that was, Jason moved it and Steve seconded. All right, any other items that come before Salary Board? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn at 11:11?
Motion to adjourn at 11:11.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned, thank you all.